Call of order, please stand for the invocation to be led by Dr. Mark Hurst. He's a deacon from First Baptist Van Buren, he's a local dentist, he's also my brother. Appreciate you being here. Also, when he's finished with the invocation, remain standing and we'll do the pledge.
That's great. Family, Father God, we just want to pause now before this meeting and just recognize you for who you are, God, as our Creator, as our Sustainer, the one who gives peace, the just God, the one who gives grace. For we thank for that grace that comes when we accept your son, Jesus, as our Savior. Lord, I pray that you'll just be with this meeting today, as this is the first one of this new year. Lord, I pray that you'll just grant wisdom to these ladies and gentlemen that are in charge. And, God, I pray that you will just continue to be with our city. God, we're just so thankful for the fact that we can do small things like start a prayer. We just pray that we will always keep you forefront of everything that we do. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a great crowd that we have for our first council meeting of the year. Before we get into our formal business, I just want to welcome everyone here tonight. Want to welcome our new city council member, Matt Dodson. We're excited about starting this new year. I appreciate all the support that we've received. We look to really just have just a great year this coming year, so I appreciate everybody being here. Do you have your copy of the minutes for last month's regular meeting, December 17th, 2018? Are there any corrections?
Second.
Second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First item of the business is the organization of the city council. The council members have been provided copies of the statute, has all the requirements and ordinances that establish the procedural rules for the council. Are there any changes to those rules or procedures?
Motion approved.
Second.
So all in favor?
Aye.
So we'll move on to the regular business of council. This, uh, this next item is a, is a special item, one that we're really proud of. We're going to be swearing in our new police officers. Thank you for all the families being here. Chief Hammond, why don't you come up here and introduce our new officers?
We got three new officers that started with the Van Buren Police Department, January 1st. You guys will come on up, and they just completed their second week of 13-week training, and on their third week now. And they told me earlier they love every minute of it. Uh, but, uh, just like we said before, it's, it's very, it's, it's important that when, when police officers, police city employees retire, we make a big deal out of it, and we should. Come on up there, come on up there. But, but I think it's equally important that we, that we show the same kind of support and encouragement as when we hire new officers, so, um, that's why we started the, the, the process or the tradition of swearing our officers in by our city clerk when they begin. And it's a good time for us to introduce themselves, also to introduce their, their families and loved ones. So with that, who's going to line here and introduce yourselves, and tell a little bit about yourself, and who are you probably?
Um, I'm Jacob DeWes. Um, I'm a Christian, I'm a husband, and I'm a soon-to-be father, I'm July. And, uh, my family is right here, my mother with my little brother, my wi- that's Sarah, my wife Jeanette, my stepbrother Logan, my other brother Eli, and my little sister that almost came up here, that's Lily, and my stepfather back there, Patrick.
Very good, very good.
Uh, my name's Kyle Walter, and I was born and raised here in Van Buren, and I love the city of Van Buren. And so I decided the best way to give back was to be a part of the Van Buren Police Department. I'm here with my family, my baby sister Abby, my stepmom Melissa, my father Terry, and my girlfriend Callie Poole, and her parents Tommy Poole and Tammy Poole, and my mother in the back Jennifer, and my grandma Dixie.
Great, very good.
I'm Andy Shepherd, uh, from Alma, don't hold that against me. We attend the on-church there in Alma. Glad to be a part of the Van Buren Police Department, it's a great place. Here with my wife and my three kids, Chelsea, Reagan, Brooklyn Harper. Uh, my mom and dad, both sets of grandparents, and, uh, my in-laws, and, uh, brought a beer.
Great.
If you'll turn around and raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kyle Walter.
Having been duly appointed
Have been duly appointed.
As a police officer of the city of Van Buren
As a police officer of the city of Van Buren
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will defend, enforce, and obey
That I will defend, enforce, and obey
The Constitution and laws of the United States
The Constitution and laws of the United States
The laws of the state of Arkansas
The laws of the state of Arkansas
And the ordinances of the city of Van Buren
And the ordinances of the city of Van Buren
That I will obey
That I will obey
The lawful orders of my superiors
The lawful orders of my superiors
And the policies and regulations
And the policies and regulations
Of the Van Buren Police Department
Of the Van Buren Police Department
That I will protect the rights
That I will protect the rights
Property and the lives
Property and the lives
Of all citizens with my life if need be
And all citizens with my life if need be
This I solemnly swear, so help me God.
This I solemnly swear, so help me God.
Thank you.
Want to take a picture with you? Anytime, if you want to take a picture with your phone or whatever you need to do. Come up here if you need to. I'll get out the light.
All right, glad you're in the way. One, two, three, one more. I hear one, two. Awesome. Next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding fixed asset removal. It's about disposal. I'm going to ask the clerk to read the resolution.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled. A resolution to authorize the mayor and city clerk to remove and dispose of certain fixed assets from the city of Van Buren's fixed asset inventories by sealed bid auction or other methods authorized under the law and for the purposes. Whereas the city of Van Buren has certain fixed assets on its fixed asset inventory list, which are obsolete and were beyond repair and are no longer cost-effective, so it's no longer be needed by the city. And whereas after an inventory of fixed assets, it is therefore recommended by our state auditor that said item or items be removed from the city's fixed asset inventory and disposed of by sealed bid auction or as otherwise authorized under Arkansas law. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Van Buren, Arkansas. Section one, the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized to remove the following asset or assets from the fixed asset inventory and to dispose of same by sealed bid auction or other such methods authorized under the law. Department, Parks and Recreation, amount $5,280.27. Description of inventory, X mark zero, turn mower, serial number 178483, control number PR dash five. Parks and Recreation, $6,000, X mark zero, turn mower, serial number 167701, control number PR dash seven.
These are 19-years-old, fucked all, essentially there's no value left in these. So it's just time to get rid of them. Is there any other discussion, any questions?
They've served their purpose well.
Motion to approve. All right, motion? Second? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Nealon?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson?
Aye.
Councilmember Swine?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood? Councilmember Sparkman?
Aye.
The House has had it, I therefore declare the resolution passed. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance to establish, it's an ordinance posting locations. I'm going to ask the clerk to read the ordinance in its entirety. Excuse me, mayor, is that the resolution one more?
It is, 01-01. Act 2019, 2019.
So, I'll ask the clerk to read this resolution in its entirety.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance designating places for the posting of ordinances, prescribing other matters related thereto, and declaring an emergency. Whereas no newspaper is published in the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, and whereas it is appropriate pursuant to ACA 14-55-206 that the city designate five of the most public places in the city for posting of notice of the adoption of ordinances of the city. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the city council of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, that's section one, the following places which are hereby found to be five of the most public places in the city are hereby designated for the posting of notice of the adoption of ordinances of the city. Van Buren Municipal Complex, Van Buren Library, Van Buren Municipal Annex, Van Buren Police Department, and Van Buren Senior Center. Section two, notice of the adoption of ordinances of the city shall be effected by the posting of ordinances at the locations set forth in section one hereof. All, all ordinances and resolutions and parts thereof in conflict therewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section four, it is further found that due to the immediate need for proper notification of the adoption of ordinances, an emergency is declared to exist, and this ordinance being necessary for the preservation of the public health, safety, and welfare, it shall take effect from and after its passage and approval.
Do we have a motion to suspend the rolls and go a second reading? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the House has had it, I therefore declare the motion carried. Ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for a second time.
An ordinance designating places for the posting of ordinances, prescribing other matters related thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we have a motion to further suspend the rolls and go on a third and final reading?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the House has had it, I therefore declare the motion carried. Ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for the third and final reading.
An ordinance designating places for the posting of ordinances, prescribing other matters related thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, it's really discussion, this is something that Phil has found insulating.
Uh, yes, a lot of the other city clerks have done a similar, have similar ordinance in their cities. If there is no newspaper that's physically published in your city, you're not required to, uh, publish it in a newspaper that's published outside the city. You can post it in public places, and it saves quite a bit of money for the city.
Any other questions? Motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Uh, will the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Nealon?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson?
Aye.
Councilmember Swine?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman?
Aye.
The House has had it, I therefore declare the ordinance, uh, 01-2019, passed. Now do we have a motion to pass the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Nealon?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson?
Aye.
Councilmember Swine?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman?
Aye.
The House has had it, I therefore declare the ordinance passed. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance to approve the purchase of a new truck for the police department. I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance in its entirety.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding and authorize a contract for and purchase of a new vehicle for the police department for the appropriation of funds, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the city of Van Buren is in need of a certain police vehicle for the safety of life and protection of property by the city of Van Buren Police Department. And whereas after extensive research and inquiry, the city of Van Buren Police Chief has determined that the purchase of the vehicle from Superior Fleet and Commercial Sales of Silas Springs, Arkansas, at the 2019 state purchase price would be the most practical, feasible, and cost-effective method for the department. And whereas, the city council has determined pursuant to ACA 14-58-303B2B that except exceptional, exceptional circumstances exist which render the competitive bidding process to not be practical or feasible. And whereas a state of emergency exists because the vehicle will provide improved life, safety, and protection of property, and because the unit is currently available. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the city council of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, the police department of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, is in immediate need to purchase one 2019 Ram 1500 crew cab vehicle. Section two, the said Ram 1500 crew cab vehicle is authorized to be purchased from Superior Fleet and Commercial Sales located in Silas Springs, Arkansas, with a total sum of $21,394 as detailed in the attached quote. Section three, the city council, in accordance with the terms of ACA 14-58-303B2B, hereby waives a requirement of competitive bidding and directs the mayor to purchase the above described for the price set forth in sections two and three above from capital improvement funds. Section four, it is further found that due to the immediate need to acquire this vehicle before the quote expires, an emergency is declared to exist, and this ordinance being necessary for the preservation of the public health, safety, and welfare, it shall take effect from and after its passage and approval. Section five, the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized by the city council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, to execute all documents, contracts, and agreements necessary to effectuate this ordinance. Section six, the various provisions and parts of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable, and if any section or part of this section or any provision or part of a provision herein is declared to be unconstitutional, inappropriate, or invalid by any court competent jurisdiction, such holding shall not invalidate or affect the remainder of this ordinance, and to that extent the provisions heretofore are declared to be severable.
Okay, do we have a motion to suspend the rolls and go a second reading? All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Okay, the House has had it, declare the motion carried, and ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for the second time.
An ordinance to waive competitive bidding and authorize a contract for and purchase of a new vehicle for the police department for the appropriation of funds, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Do we have a motion to further suspend the rolls and go on a third and final reading? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, the House has had it, declare the motion carried, and ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for the third and final reading.
An ordinance to waive competitive bidding and authorize a contract for and purchase of a new vehicle for the police department for the appropriation of funds, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Do you have Chief Hammond's memo in your, should be at your spot? Got any questions? Chief, do you have a summary that you can go over?
This is just, uh, um, as you know, we've, uh, actually in the first next month, we're going to, uh, uh, draw out our new SRO positions. We just bought, as you remember, bought six patrol cars for those guys in your house. And this will just be a supplement to our SRO program with details outlined in the memo, such as mainly for, uh, the ease of moving equipment that the school patrol officer use. Little car that we use, and we have to always have a trailer to move it around, or put in the back of the truck, if the truck's available. This will just make it easier, uh, more efficient for us to, to do our programs, and also for other means that we, that we, as a department off as well.
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
It says Chevrolet Ram, Ram is a Dodge product?
Yes, it should be a Dodge.
It should be a Dodge, okay.
We'll make that change. Any other questions?
So it's not a 15, just a Dodge Ram?
It is a Dodge Ram, I think it's a 15.
It is.
15.
Do we have a motion to adopt the ordinance as read?
Take that motion.
Second. Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Nealon?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson?
Aye.
Councilmember Swine?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman?
Aye.
The House has had it, I declare the ordinance passed. Need a motion for the ordinance to pass?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Nealon?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson?
Aye.
Councilmember Swine?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman?
Aye.
Okay, the House has had it, uh, we declare the ordinance passed, this is ordinance 02-2019. Next item on the agenda is ordinance to recognize a new group to manage the Van Buren Farmers Market. I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance in its entirety.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance amending ordinance number 09-2012 to change supervision of the Van Buren Farmers Market, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the Farmers Market Growers Association Supervisory Committee for the Van Buren Farmers Market pursuant to the authority of ordinance number 09-2012 has decided to discontinue operating in the city of Van Buren. And whereas the Van Buren Main Street Market sponsored by Van Buren Original desires to take on responsibility for the farmers market in the city of Van Buren. And whereas it is necessary to amend ordinance number 09-2012 in order to allow the Van Buren Main Street Market to supervise and conduct the farmers market in the city of Van Buren. And whereas the amendment of ordinance number 09-2012 will benefit area farmers and the producers of food goods and produce, local businesses that use food products, and consumers of all income levels who will gain access to healthier, fresher, less transported foods, in addition to supporting regional agriculture. And whereas the city of Van Buren finds that without immediate passage of farmers market in Van Buren may no longer exist, which will fail to satisfy the purpose, purposes set forth herein, and therefore for the protection of the health, welfare, and safety of the inhabitants of the city, and as herein set out, an emergency exists and is hereby declared to exist. And this ordinance shall be and become effective immediately upon this passage and adoption by the city council. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, the city of Van Buren hereby amends section one of ordinance number 09-2012 to provide that the Van Buren Farmers Markets shall be organized and managed by the Van Buren Main Street Market herein referred to as MSM. The Farmers Market Growers Association shall no longer be responsible for or provide management of the Van Buren Farmers Market. And ordinance number 09-2012 is amended to reflect the change in supervision. Section two, the city of Van Buren hereby amend section three of ordinance number 09-2012 to authorize the MSM to operate inside Freedom Park located in the 800 block of Main Street in historic downtown Van Buren within and adjacent to the park, and on the days and times approved by the mayor's office for a proposed marketplace layout and schedule for each calendar year, that is to be provided by MSM to the mayor's office no later than February 15th of each year. Section three, the city of Van Buren hereby amend section four of ordinance number 09-2012 listing the following goods to be sold at the MSM. Fruits, vegetables, field crops, meat from locally raised and processed farm animals, plants, flowers, fresh and dry, herbs, trees, and garden-related items, honey, eggs, nuts, baked goods, jams and jellies, candy, fruit butters, cheese, and other dairy products, condiments, handmade craft. All products sold at the market must be produced in compliance with the, with all applicable regulations of the U.S. Department of Health, U.S. Department of Agriculture, and any like agencies in the state of Arkansas. All crafts will be reviewed and approved by the MSM, will convey or allow to be offered at the marketplace. Only original handcrafted items shall be displayed and offered for sale at the marketplace. The MSM shall have the right to accept or reject vendors and products based on criteria established by the MSM. Section four, the MSM shall establish adult and enforce rules and regulations deemed appropriate relative to the operation of the market, and shall promptly review, remove, or promptly remove any person who is disorderly or who refuses to obey any rules or regulations relating to management or conduct of the market. Section five, parking is prohibited to anyone other than the holder of the marketplace spaces as assigned by the MSM, MSM or as designated, and as allowed by the mayor's office at the locations and on the days and times established by section two herein. Removal of an unauthorized vehicle by police impoundment is to be upon complaint of a city official or the MSM market or as designated, and shall be enforceable beginning one hour prior to opening of the market on the days established by section two herein. Section six, emergency clause, the Van Buren City Council has determined that an emergency exists and that the immediate adoption and enforcement of this ordinance, being necessary for the public peace, health, safety, and welfare, shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage. Section seven, the various provisions and parts of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable, and if any section or part of this section or any provision or part of a provision herein is declared to be unconstitutional, inappropriate, or invalid by any court competent jurisdiction, such holdings shall not invalidate or affect the remainder of this ordinance, and to that extent the provisions heretofore are declared to be severable. Section nine, all ordinances, resolutions, or the acts of the city in conflict with the terms hereof are repealed or amended to the extent of any such conflict. The remaining provisions of ordinance number 09-2012, not specifically modified or amended herein, remain in full force and effect.
Do we have a motion to suspend the rolls and go a second reading? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the House has had it, declare the motion carried, and ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for the second time.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 09-2012 to change supervision of the Van Buren Farmers Market, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Do we have a motion to further suspend the rolls and go on a third and final reading? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? The House has had it, I therefore declare the motion carried, and ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for the third and final reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 09-2012 to change supervision of the Van Buren Farmers Market, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Okay, I'll, we can, we can ask questions, Rusty Myers is here. There's questions that I can't answer, I guess. But essentially, um, we were approached, um, by the VBO and our existing Farmers Market Growers Association about having a new group organize, manage the farmers market in the city. And so we've included, I believe you have the, an email from the current president, where he indicates the vote that was taken, to where they a little bit moved away from, from that situation. So, um, we now have a new organization to manage this, and it works out with that.
Question, um, just looking at the email, it said that, uh, most of the current vendors felt like that the location was not a good location. What's the details behind that? Did you know, Rusty?
Jim, uh, our, my understanding of what their situation is comes from a, a meeting that Joy Hallman was with me. Uh, it would be the, it, it, this is approved, would be the market manager for this new market. Several of them voiced concerns about being at that location. They felt like it had parking issues and, uh, conflicts with the train passengers and that sort of thing. And just to, some of them didn't feel like apparently this was a good location. And we had, uh, explained to them at, at a number of meetings that we had with the group that it felt like would make it work, and we were anxious to, to give that a try under a new organization, so, uh, that's what we're, what we're headed for. I don't know if that answers your question.
It, it, it sort of does. It, they were expressing concern, or concerns there. They felt like parking was an issue, and that, uh, traffic because of the train, which I would have thought would have been a good thing, was a, a, an issue. And that's the primary reason, and I know you're not answering what they said, but they, they said the vendors expressed they don't see freedom as a workable area. But that sounds like that's what it was.
That's the way, that's what I understood.
Are those same people who are, are they going to go ahead and participate in the farmers market?
Yeah.
Are they going to try and be at the library?
They're, uh, they are, were, are welcome, uh, as, as individual vendors. They're welcome to, uh, apply to our, uh, organization and, and, or to be a vendor. Yes, and they will be considered. We, we're open to that. In fact, Joy, how many applications have you received so far?
I do have nine vendors, uh, so far, and then a tenth application sent out.
And the pavilion will hold...
The pavilion will hold ten vendors and then four, um, parking for trucks.
So we're, we're just about at, we're approaching capacity, um, under the one pavilion. And, uh, should it expand beyond that or should their interest be there beyond that with our vendors and with the customers that would come? And we hope that that's the case. We may very well be back talking to the, to you later about, uh, using a second pavilion as well. So, but we'll cross that road when we get to it.
And is that, are, are most of the vendors that, the new vendors that you're getting, are most of them agriculture-related or most of them craft-related or what's the mix?
I have a, I have a mix of both as of right now. The majority, um, of the craft vendors from the other organization have come over, but I have had several, um, produce vendors already approaching.
I know when the park was designed, that, I mean, a farmers market being there was one of the main goals of the pavilion. That's why it's designed the way it's designed. That's why we had two for growth and to be able to do other things while there's a farmers market there. The Farmers Market Group was approached then and gave a full blessing. And, and I really think since we invested in that park, we probably should keep the, the farmers market there as it was intended. Sorry, Phil was...
You can, you can look at the past ordinances that have been passed in two thousand eight to two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. The, the location is, seems to have been changed from time to time. And, um, I agree with, uh, Alderman Wood that this seems like an, an ideal location. Just with the pavilions and, um, having it covered. I realize, you know, we all wish we had more parking. But I still think it's the ideal...
It's gonna look good. Yeah.
Well, I've gone in the rain specifically because it's covered and that, you know, it's a great gateway into also supporting our, our merchants downtown. There's a lot of positives to being there in Freedom Park.
We feel very positive about it. We don't, we don't feel like parking's an, an issue. And we feel like the train is a, it's a positive action. And we appear to, uh, market it evolently. And, uh, the AMP Commission is behind it. And we'll see it work as well for lots of good reasons. Feel like it could be a very positive commodity for, uh, for our community and certainly a draw, uh, bringing people downtown. Uh, so we see it providing a lot of good things for our community. And those pavilions are perfect. They really are. They did say, uh, although, but they were designed and actually with a lot of that in mind for the, the things that are in them. So we feel like it's a very, it's a plus. In, in fact, they're far better facilities than most of the other farmer market around here has. So we feel like it's a, a perfect situation that can make a, a, a very outstanding market. And with Joy's leadership and management, we feel like that's gonna happen.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Do we have a motion to, uh, adopt the ordinance as read? Do you have it? The clerk please call a roll.
Councilmember Nealon?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson?
Aye.
Councilmember Swine?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman?
Aye.
The House have it up. Declare the ordinance passed. Do we have a motion to pass the emergency clause? Pleasure. Second. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Nealon?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson?
Aye.
Councilmember Swine?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman?
The House have it. Therefore, declare the ordinance number zero three dash twenty nineteen passed. Next on the agenda is the financial report. Do you have copies of the financial report? Will the clerk please read the amount?
One million nine hundred sixty-nine thousand thirteen dollars seventy-one cents.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Declare the motion carried. Next on the, the agenda is the department reports. You have copies of the reports in various departments. If you have any questions, uh, just let us know. But if not, I'll, you can clear those reports as filed or submitted. Under miscellaneous and general discussion, we have a, uh, street closing request from Tottenham and the Sheriff's Department. You have the top, the, the detailed list included in your packet from, uh, both of these, from Tottenham especially. Is there anyone here who wants to speak about that?
If I need to.
I have a question.
I'm Roger Redd, uh, President of the Old Town Merchants Association now. Uh, our request, uh, is to, uh, each year is to, is to alert you as to the street closings that we plan to have for festivals and events, uh, throughout the year. Uh, if you'll look at your list, uh, that we've provided, uh, kind of the only thing that really changes a lot is the second Saturday shopping, which is an event that we've been having downtown now for a little over a year. It's, uh, it changed from a Tuesday to Thursday night event to a Saturday. Uh, it's, it's pretty successful. We're having a lot of, a lot of traction with it. We would like to close the street for that on the second Saturday of each month. And that would be from March the ninth through September the fourteenth. And that would be a one-day closing of Main Street. The, uh, Old Timbers Day Festival, uh, is May the seventeenth through the nineteenth. We've closed the street from the seventeenth to the evening of the nineteenth for that festival. Cruisin' Main, Car Show, uh, we're, we're, we're back doing car shows again. We're bringing that back to the community. That would be in, um, June. We're also, if you remember last year, we did the Slide Down Main with the Giant Water Slide. We're gonna do that again this year. Uh, that'll be July the thirteenth, Downtown Junk Fest, which has been very popular. Uh, it would be August the thirtieth through September the first, regular festival schedules. Uh, we also have a car show, uh, on October the fifth. So we're requesting a closure of Main Street during that period. Fall Festival starts October the eleventh, uh, regular festival dates for that. That's, uh, Halloween on Main, and that happened on the twenty-sixth of October. And, um, that has exploded into an enormous event. And so we'd like to close the street for that. And then, and that takes us to the end of the year, Jingle and Mingle Christmas event. If we close the street for, and, uh, wanted to like to do that again.
I entertain a motion to approve the closing. I'm just gonna check, ready to talk. I'll make that motion.
I was just gonna ask about the five million dollar donation. If we're anything, great to have in the motion.
Oh, it is?
I have a motion? I didn't. I didn't hear to the motion. But if it is, then it's okay, we'll cover it.
Thinking it's just part of your class. We'll make sure to mention it.
Will the other operating people come back?
That will be the next closing.
Okay.
They've coordinated it for me to...
There were some issues with that.
We don't want that to happen again.
We still need a second. Second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. Now, next is the Crawford County Sheriff's Office. Since, uh, this, this is the May twenty-fifth Pioneer Day Parade. Like you said, Owen Swine, there was a conflict last year. But it's not gonna conflict with the Junk Fest, um, as it did last year. I would entertain a motion to approve the street closing. Second. All in favor of the motion? Can you oppose? Motion carries. Who cleans up after the... Who cleans up the...
I do not. I do not.
The mayor's staff.
They're very good about that.
Sheriff's Department.
Make sure don't walk behind the horses. Before we, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn, I, I just wanna begin to say thank you, other board to, uh, working with this council and continuing to, uh, progress the city. We've had a lot of really good discussions, uh, since I began on January second. A lot of good things, a lot of ideas, a lot of, um, thoughts coming from different groups, whether it's from the chamber, whether it's from civic groups. A lot of ideas coming through. So I hope that, um, we'll see a lot of good, good things happen this coming year.
Do you realize how young y'all are? That's good. Very good.
I wanted to say how much I appreciate you and the younger aldermen that took the wool by the horns and went out and, and cleaned up the, the way that they had. That was awesome, the way you guys got that done.
I appreciate that. That really was special. It was special. And I've talked to the, the department heads and, um, it was really neat because we received the volunteer community of the year just a couple of weeks after that. And, um, really brought it home. So, um, we have a great city. We have a, a city that cares about each other and, uh, wants to work together. And so we need to incorporate that spirit into what we do here and, um, continue moving this forward. Uh, I plan to do the state of the city next month. And so, uh, talk more about vision, a lot of the things that we're wanting to accomplish this year, uh, next month. But we've got a lot of things going on, a lot of, a lot of good things. So I look forward to, uh, to giving that. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I do, yeah.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.